It being sixty-four, a quality meeting. The owner looking for a motion to approve the minutes of April the third.
That wasn't our last meeting, was it?
I love two of them.
On motion to accept.
I'll second.
Discussion?
No.
Uh, Sandy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Hey, yes. I need another motion for the minutes of April seventeenth.
That was our last meeting, right?
That was the last one.
Um, I had one quick question on those minutes.
Well, you can discuss it too. Somebody's made a motion, so I'll make a motion.
Alright.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yep.
Um, on the minutes of the seventeenth, I think there was a little bit of a miss. I noted, um, what is it? Point four. It said, um, Dave Norre presented the request for this last P question. He made one had questions in the subdivision. She was not aware of its location. Uh, questions about floodplains and sidewalks. So I just, I wanted it to be noted on these minutes that it wasn't in particular about this particular subdivision, but more what we as planning board and me as town are doing about those issues and, and like why we're not requiring sidewalks when we have developments or, um... So that was more my question. It wasn't so much about this particular subdivision, but more a general discussion.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, I wanted to make sure.
I'll have to modify it then.
If you could, that would be great because I, again, I don't want to seem, uh, certainly wasn't in the release of these lots. It was more a general discussion of policy.
Okay.
There was, there was a typo too, and I don't have any on the seventeenth one, um...
Do you remember which print it was?
Right at the top, right at the beginning.
Is it here?
Oh, there it is.
I don't think we have.
No, we didn't.
We just have an agenda, so, yeah.
Was she like a printed copy?
Yeah, the seventeenth, I guess. We used to have, there was, there was a typo. Right at the top of it.
Would it be in the FEMA section maybe? I'm look, I'm trying not to go far down.
I wonder why the computer didn't take that. No, it was, um...
It might have replaced a word.
I read it at work and, uh, and I said, oh, I gotta make sure. I forgot to put it.
You want to look here?
Oh, right here. The chairman also introduced Attention Michael Thomas, television. We saw about turning television. Alright, that's what it was. That's what it was. I knew it was going to be that. I laugh when I say attention.
Thank you for taking care of us tonight. Start for us, I think, with you.
Um, I've been here a couple other times, but I feel like...
It's good to have you on the team. I don't mess with the computer too. Are we recording on anything?
Uh, yeah, we're recording on there and also on Teams.
So I'll talk to you after.
Sure.
Okay, so I need a second.
Uh, you have to, with modifications.
With the modification.
Oh, Pam, you want to amend your motion to approve the minutes with the modifications?
I think it was me.
Oh, you made it, Sandy.
I would like to amend my motion to say as amended.
Discussion?
No more.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Yes. Cory?
Yes.
A and R.
Hold on to the table.
There you go.
Uh, this is the backup plan. Created that, but that's not what we're doing now. Eight-eighty-four, it's Michael.
This is the western street line?
Yes.
Eight-eighty-four Worcester Street. That's Brooks, that's real Worcester.
Commercial driver right past the street.
There's a house here right now.
The house with the barn, the barn had all the Texaco and all the gas station signs.
Oh.
They did, they did sell the property. So it's the existing house lot with the barn, as you noted. Uh, currently it's just a big existing lot. We're proposing to divide it up into three new lots. So we'll place the house and the barn on its own lot, and then we'll have two new building lots, uh, here and here.
Are you using town sewer?
Yes.
Town sewer?
I believe so.
It is, yeah.
That would be new, just asking.
And then the other kind of issue that we've already kind of taken care of is, uh, existing grade prepared site plan. You have a copy of that. Uh, Glenn Kravas, he who's here in attendance also was heavily involved with permitting that through conservation, uh, because it is in a flood zone. So there is, uh, you know, riverfront, flood zone, compensatory storage, uh, all that other stuff to make sure that we could actually build on these, uh, again. So that was already permitted, uh, somewhere on here. Uh, right here, we were the, uh, report at the registry of deeds, the order of conditions that was approved for this to, to, uh, permit the, the building in the, in the flood area to perform the compensatory storage. Uh, from a dimensional standpoint, all the lots meter exceed, you know, area and frontage, uh, by a lot, so...
What kind of housing is it going to be?
Residential, right?
Two flats.
Is it two flats or?
Two, 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 two lotses.
Could I borrow one of those, please?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to?
Yeah. Um, how it's part of you?
This is an A and R plan that...
A and R upstairs.
Yeah.
Frontage, lot size, access.
Yep. With our name. Another thing too.
Appreciate that you know that.
Yeah, well.
I don't get that, remember?
You, you, you are, you are aware that, uh, you're going to have to apply for a special permit for these lots, correct? Under the, uh, flood, uh, plain overlay district for Tom Southbridge, uh, any, any work in the, within the flood zone or alteration requires a special permit. So you're gonna have to tell your cut, your client that they're gonna have to apply, uh, for this.
Yeah, I believe we were aware of that.
Okay.
Like you said, we wanted to make sure we got it through conservation.
Mm-hmm.
That was a big, big point I have to say.
That you do have to go through conservation.
They've already been through.
Okay, that's great.
So we figured if we get that, not that it automatically guarantees, but I think we've done our due diligence enough.
Well, I think if you take here the flood...
Right.
The flood storage.
Well, I'll, the plan meets area frontage and, uh, access, so, uh, I'll make a motion to...
Cory, anything?
No.
Okay. Mike?
Anybody else?
Anybody else in the room?
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R plan for, um, eight-eighty-four Worcester Street as presented.
I'll second.
Twenty seconds. Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Hey, yes.
They do, they do have the note on the plan, just like, so we'd like to see the determination, uh, of conformance or the town of Southbridge zoning by a lot. Uh, it's not a determination of, uh, conformance or the zoning by a lot, which is proper no done in A and R plan.
I need a magic marker.
Um, oh my gosh.
For the Mylar.
Like, was it those behind you or?
No, it's gonna be a...
Black, a black.
Used to be.
Yeah, south zip then.
I need two copies.
Yeah, I'm scrolling up to get out of my way.
Sure.
You can have all these.
We have a, a date stamp too. Do you have any idea? Is it in, do we have drawers?
We have it in drawers.
We could always write.
We have had an A and R plan for quite a while here.
What's the building of the house is in or how, how is, how would be like, I'm just so curious because I think we're probably getting a lot more of this in town soon and wonder, to be on council, but I wonder about like, what's the latest in terms of how you arrange the cars in front of the facade of the building? Like, what's driving that?
Yeah, so, you know, there's a process to everything when you go in the building, so you gotta kind of put your ducks in rows. So the first one for us in this case, we thought was conservation. We did that. The second one was A and R. And then the third will be, as you said, you'll get a special permit. I'm sure all that information will come together.
Special permit.
Yeah.
That would be a great thing.
Colors, parking, all that good facade, whatever they're doing.
How are you guys keeping the barn?
I believe the barn's staying, yeah.
Barn's staying, that's awesome. There's a lot of history in that property.
It's a good piece of land. I'm glad they were able to figure out how to make it work.
Well, and it's the right place to concept, to put more housing in, for sure.
Right.
You know, it's a, it's a good busy road. It's quick access in and out, and it's in an area of town that can afford to have more housing in it, for sure.
I think every town's looking for more housing. It's pretty popular, you know?
We have a lot of housing. We just need to make it better. Guys want to buy any of the triple deckers and they look pretty?
Yeah, no, I know.
No, I guess it only goes up to twenty-twenty-three.
I think you guys are probably facing the same thing that facing a Natick. I do a lot of Natick and, you know, that lot, posters that lots and they're all houses from the forties and fifties and... No one wants to rehab them anymore. Like, you know, flipping houses is kind of dying. They want to just knock them down for the big two-story and... Honestly, Natick's been very good to work with, very reasonable.
Natick can need them, need them.
There are wonderful stories of regeneration. It's actually a point, because I grew up in Wayland, so I point to Natick a lot because back when I was young, it was a hot mass down there. And it's starting to really boost itself up, and a lot of my friends have moved there, especially through the commuter rail, so it's been beautiful. And you guys have the same brick, me and Sarah, so I'd love to see, like, if there's any, anything to see or try.
Go ahead, we don't know.
Because they've got a brilliant block.
Yeah. The only concern I have about what they're doing is like, it's becoming very expensive to live there. You know, you buy a ranch with four or five hundred, you invest five to seven, now you're selling it for like one point five, like, not a lot of people have one point five.
No.
Perhaps.
No, it was, it was working well, it is not anywhere.
Thank you, sir.
Did, uh, was it eight, was a form eight submitted with us?
I did. I brought, I brought two copies. I'm not sure where it is right at the moment, but I gave one to the clerk and I gave one to this office.
Okay. When the money's been paid.
Oh, probably.
I think we're gonna get slammed.
Yeah.
So, because there's a lot of money to be made here.
There's a lot of potential.
Yeah.
Who's the gentleman that owns the gas stations?
No.
I, I, I just started working with him. He's trying to build and renovate, so...
Well, that's the thing to do because it's gonna happen. They're all coming.
Thank you for feeding you. Thank you.
Section nine of the, of the flood plain, uh, by the lot.
Sorry.
Thanks for watching, appreciate it. Like, plan two? Four, two, next to St. Street?
Try to work with me.
Okay. Okay, what do you like to do?
So I'd like to sell some hair extensions. Because, uh, we those that like to braid, we all go to Worcester to grab some hair extension. And then I braid my own hair. So sometimes as you start to braid the hair, you realize that your hair extension is all gone and you need, let me say, just a part, uh, one pack of hair extension. You would have to drive all the way to Worcester to get the hair extension. So I made it up my mind that, oh, at the right time, I would like to get a store and then, uh, bring some more hair extension because more bluff are coming here. I've been here for five years. So, uh, I would like to bring some hair extension for us who do, uh, like extension. I don't like to leave my natural hair on. I always want to get different colors of extension. So that is, and then, uh, the store is big. So I decided to bring some African sealed food. Because, uh, when I had the hair album session, I could do a cap for, uh, African sealed food. Because we all Africans here, we drive to Worcester to get our fufu. So when I get my Spanish, uh, Spanish from, uh, the store and I get my sauce, I can get fufu around here to make.
Nice.
So, so this is fufu, it's sealed. We have fufu, it's potato. Like, uh, a powdered potato.
Oh.
Yeah, we use it to make our fufu, like you guys do mashed potato. That's how it is. And this is, uh, cassava, dry cassava. We put it under the sun, the squishy sun, to dry the cassava and then we make it and it becomes powder. So it's called kunkunzi. They are all powdered food, they are sealed.
See, you need, you're meeting it.
And this is also called banqu. It's also corn. It's grounded corn, dried grounded corn. For Africa, I mean, we have the ogali for Kenya. I work at Carver, we have, we have, uh, different Kenyans and Ghanaans and others in there. So I decided to bring this, uh, sealed African food to the store.
Yeah.
So that will be easier for, uh, us to get it and drive it all the way to Worcester to get it, you know?
Right, right.
Yeah, so, that's alright.
I was just talking to my hairdresser. I wanted to get one of those halo pieces for me, for like when I go out to parties and stuff, like where it could just give the little boost.
Yeah, the, the pony, you want to do something like the ponytail?
Well, it's like, it's called a halo, it like clips in here, and it's just a hairpiece, basically, but I mean, I'm just so excited that we have those in town.
You bring up the taxman. Twenty-two is which, which building?
All the girls are doing it now.
That's a huge building.
Past the, the barber shop now, it's the next one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. It was, um, what's his name's building, um?
Yeah.
Next to the alley, the corner. Okay, okay. It's, it's where the comic, uh, the comic store used to be.
No.
No, no, that's the other block.
No, it, but there was a, I think there was a tobacco store.
Tobacco, with a bunch of bright lights.
So are you, are you going to have a smaller one or the bigger one? It's on the first floor.
On the right, right side or the left side?
Left side, we're looking at it.
So that's big.
Right, right side's got the barber shop, this is the next one.
Oh.
That's an alley.
I got it.
Okay, I guess I thought.
I thought the hairdresser was in there.
I thought that was the next one.
The hairdresser is mid?
No, that's the opposite of me. We have a listed hairdressing.
It's across from you.
Yeah, it's across, so it's opposite mine.
Okay, so you're across the street in?
No, no.
No, twenty-two is...
Right where the green is.
Where the green?
Yeah, see, that's not the street you're on.
I'm so confused. She's saying that that's not her building.
Where, where are you pointing?
The smoke shop, next to the smoke shop. You know where the barber shop is? Next to the smoke shop and then...
The building's in half.
The next room we go on.
I'm sorry, this one?
No. No, next one.
This one?
No, the one, the bigger one.
Right, right, yeah, that's relevant, yes. But there, there's two parts there. There's two parts of the building.
Oh, okay, so it's the hairdresser on one side and then you'll be next to the hairdresser?
Yeah, yeah. But barber shop.
The barber shop is sitting a little far from me. So, uh, that, the, the barber shop, not the bigger one.
Just, uh, go to the picture, the film.
I don't know where on Hamilton we are.
Beginning, right at the curb.
I think I know where the, it's a good place. People can bark in the back and walk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, the Hamilton, the Hamilton twenty-two. So there's a big parking lot.
I think it's, it's the one that built Rio.
Over to the right. Go down, yeah, yeah. Alright, now turn right there, right there. That's what I said, is this the one on the right, right there?
Exactly where the car is, the block car.
Yeah, right there.
So, this is this side.
Where the F-Y-F is.
Okay.
Yes, so that's gonna be my shop.
Oh, great. There's a, we had just had a business come before and it's across the street from you.
Yeah, it was a clothing shop. It was a clothing shop.
I would love something different than clothing.
Yeah, see, he still even have the sign there. So I would have to take the sign and put mine there. The F and L.
What?
F-Y, uh, the F-Y.
What are you gonna use for signage? For how you sign on, uh, is it gonna be in the window or?
Uh, where, where his sign used to be, the F-Y used to be, I'm gonna put the K and L.
Okay.
There were two.
It disappeared.
So those, you see this one?
Yes.
They're not going to use it. You're going to do the one here.
Okay.
That's why they turned on to the two.
Okay.
Under the overhang.
So you can talk to the...
What are your hours of operation? You're gonna be Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday?
Monday to Saturday.
Okay, in hours? Nine to five, nine to eight?
Yeah, because people have to come in after work.
Yes.
Yeah.
I even wait three till eleven too.
So I think, I'm just gonna mention something. I think you do need, for the site permit, if you want to build your sign or have it built, I think you need to go to the building inspector on the floor above here. And he will tell you how big the sign can be and so forth.
His name is Mike Julian. And...
Yeah, and it, being that you've already got a sign there and changing the graphics, you'll probably, you'll fill out a permit and you'll say you're just changing the graphics, uh, on the sign. That's, that's what it's gonna do.
Same sign.
And I think you might need a, what's called a retail food permit. So just check with him about that. Because you don't want to get... What's really frustrating is when you get a permit here and then you have to go somewhere else, and then they say, oh no, you need to go somewhere else. So find out all at once. So if you go to the building inspector, what do I need?
All your stuff is packaged. You don't need anything.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all come ready.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you just need a retail... Maybe not, maybe you will, but no, no.
There's also, um, I believe there was some funding. I don't know if any is left to help businesses with signage in town. When we had the bakery.
Katie can give you information.
No, we actually just got approved for more funding for that, and, um, your building would, would apply, so if, if your landlord was on board, we could, um, help you out.
So that would be money and support to put up your sign, your business. One thing on the list.
Cory, do you have anything?
No.
Anybody in the audience?
No, it's, it's infilling and I, I think it's, anything that can fill storefronts outbridge, at this point, I think is great.
And fill in need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, site plan review for Lois... How do you pronounce?
Like, Edie.
Okay.
Okay?
You got it.
At twenty, Edie, at, uh, twenty-two Hamilton Street for a retail, uh, shop in the central core district.
Second?
With, with, with the conditions, uh, the, the store hours, uh, Monday through Saturday, uh, nine AM to eight PM. Other, um, town of Southbridge and, uh, miss, or state and local permits, uh, that are required are obtained.
If you need to change your time, just come back to us and see if you have problems.
Yeah, so now, you know, if you say, if eight o'clock is too late, you say hi.
Well, if you do seven, it's fine.
Yeah.
If you do nine, you can come back.
Or if you decide you want to open it on Sundays.
That's not my...
No, why, why do you, why do we even do that?
Yeah.
Let's do Monday through, Monday through...
Sunday?
Daily, I would just put daily at eight to eight PM.
Yeah.
Okay, but doesn't, you're not restricted and everything else.
Yeah.
You know, why, why, I, I'm thinking, why do we do that?
Somebody might, my expense kunkunzi on Sunday. Call you, can I have two?
It would be... I would bet I would do instead of daily. Yeah, yeah, because daily, daily sometimes refers to during the week. Uh, I would just say, um, um, seven days a week, uh, nine AM
Yeah.
Uh, to eight PM.
Yeah, and that way you don't have to worry.
Never there, you don't have to, and it's fine.
Okay.
You can adjust.
It would be so cool if you ever have like Afri, teach like African cooking so that we can learn how to use these products. I know.
Right, so we got a motion in a second?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Harry?
Mike? Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nine, yes, it's, yay!
Is her name Nine?
Nope. Take your fufu and go.
You should talk to the hairdressers in town because a lot of them do hair extensions, and if they have a local source for them, like, um, Therapy, which is on, what is that, um, Central Street? I was there the last time they were putting in hair extensions for somebody, and if they had a local place that they could go, that'd be awesome. So talk to the hairdressers.
Great, thank you.
This is the discount of all the staff here.
Thank you very much.
Once you get started, you know, there is a group, um, a merchant's group that you might want to join.
Southbridge Business Partnership?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, she's got a lot going on right now. They would like to see you join, and it might be helpful for you.
They give a lot of support to each other and they bring people to your store when you open, so, you know, so Southbridge Business Partnership. They're awesome people. They will love to have you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
The, um, waiver. Now, do the waiver first. And then do the bill.
What's the bill?
Yeah, alright, so we're moving on to the man that you haven't given a waiver on. Right, looks like, okay, I didn't know if I had to do one, oh, we did. Okay, so, what we have before us now is our forty-fifty optical drive.
I'm sorry, you're going to die.
Like how babies stuck in the birth canal.
So, Michael's gonna do that first. I make a motion to... You did this. How's that?
That's how it works. Has anything changed since the last meeting? Other than the amended changes in the email that we saw? There's been no changes?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I don't...
Ken, I went through the whole thing.
Ken thought we needed to do this first, just...
And I, and I think if we could look, didn't we, we voted?
No, you do, you wrote this.
I know, but we already did. Well, night we, the night we closed that hearing, we voted, we voted that.
I don't believe so.
I don't remember that.
Alright, anyway, we'll just do it again. I'll make a motion to approve the waiver requested by, um, Southbridge Associates, uh, Two LLC uh, for the reduction of parking at the, uh... This is totally not working wrong. So the reduction of parking, parking located at forty, um... And fifty. And fifty optical drive, um... From the two hundred and seventeen required parking spaces to one hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces shown on the, um, submitted, uh, site plan. Wait a second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I'm done.
Cory, anything?
No.
Alright. There are none?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Mike? Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Arnold?
Epstein?
Dave, yes.
That felt kind of anticlimactic.
That's only the waiver though.
I want the waiver. So I'll make a motion to approve the special permit application. Right here. No. Special permit application submitted by Southbridge Associates Two LLC. Southbridge Associates, wow. Associates, uh.
Eleven.
Eleven LLC and Southbridge Associates Twelve LLC.
With conditions as noted.
Yeah.
Do we have to, we have to.
We gotta read them all, we gotta read them all. Four, four, uh, for forty and fifty optical drive with the conditions as. The conditions are.
We can get a copy.
Yep, one right here.
Thank you.
Really, sir. We have condition one. And I ask that we to say it again in, in the conditions.
Yeah, okay. Condition one, that the, uh, the waiver of the parking has just been granted. Or two, that all work authorized under the special permit shall be in accordance with the following. The application and the materials and testimony submitted by the applicant.
Will you read it?
Well, no, just see.
Uh, that's not the conditions.
Why are we doing?
These are the conditions.
That's not, it is a condition, but I.
Yeah.
Like I usually say. Usually you list the thing and the, the, the condition would be after this.
Why is this changed then from the.
No, no, it's the same, it is the same.
He's just showing a sheet.
Who wrote this?
Can you?
Yeah. There's all, showing all the, all the latest, individual sheets are on there.
Okay.
See.
Yep, after that, look at the next page.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, I think the conditions.
He wanted to add the waivers and he wanted to add.
All the sheets.
Number two, I think he wanted.
Yeah, but the sheets aren't, they should be part of the decision, but they're not a condition of the.
Yes, and that should be.
But this, yeah, but you list, you, you usually list, but all right, it's not the right way of doing it, it's not.
Well, it calls him up.
It does, but it's not, that's not a condition. In reference of the supportive material for, for the hearing that we're approving the special permit, then it should go into the conditions. But anyway, it's, it's written this way that, um, the work authorized under the permit shall be in accordance with the applicant's supportive materials and testimony submitted by the applicant and its representative to the planning board at the public hearings on September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, December sixth, twenty twenty-three, January third, twenty twenty-four, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, as revised by this decision. The approved plans entitled, uh, proposed site plans and documents for Franklin Realty Advisors, proposed residential multifamily development prepared by, it should be Boulder Engineering. And there's a, there's a list, I don't think we have the list of plans, each plan in the decision in our reading here.
Want me to just read them off very quickly and give you a.
You can do it, yeah.
C one oh one, C one oh two, C two oh one, C three oh one, C three oh two, C four oh one, C six oh two, C seven oh one, C seven oh two, C seven oh three, C nine oh one, and C nine oh two.
With different dates though. Uh, I actually dated all one twenty-five, twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, now they'll all sound familiar.
You got the.
We left two more over here.
More on yellow page.
Yeah, we, she got those two.
Oh, nine oh two?
I'll, I'll read.
Yes.
For a while. Number three, all improvements to the buildings and site are subject to local and state or municipal commission approvals. Four, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall present final site plans and building plans, the plans, to the planning board and to the building commissioner for review as consistency with the special permit decision and all applicable building codes and life safety codes. Preparing these plans, the applicant shall coordinate with and work with the building commissioner and the fire chief for guiding fire protection and life safety matters. Any alterations to the approved site plans herein reference will require the applicant to file an amendment to the special permit prior to issuance of the building permit. As the planning board's request, a third-party peer consultant shall be procured to review the plans. The applicant agrees to pay a reasonable cost for third-party peer review. The applicant shall submit the plans to the consultant, retained by the town, the consultant for the review. The consultant shall review the final plans and provide any comments within thirty days. The board shall review and discuss all comments from the consultant. Any material modifications to the plans that are found to be inconsistent with this decision within thirty days shall require filing for a modification of the special permit of the planning board. Five, if the planning board fails to notify the applicant of questions or concerns from the consultant within thirty days after submission of the plan to the consultant, the plans shall be deemed to be approved. Six. Existing portable water lines servicing the buildings at forty and fifty optical drive shall be inspected in accordance with the town of Southbridge Water Department standard requirements and be witnessed by water department personnel. All new water lines shall be installed and inspected in accordance with the town of Southbridge Water Department standard requirements. A plan of existing water line locations within the property shall be supplied to the Southbridge Water and Sewer Departments.
Can I question about this?
No.
It's like something's missing here.
We can, we have.
I, I just, I thought that we were supposed to submit the paperwork to the water department. We had talked about not just Southbridge Water Department personnel being present when they're inspected, but that the.
The plan. They're the ones that.
Plan, that's the plan that is.
Yeah, but no, if they're present, if they're present, they're making their own documents. It's of what, what they're seeing and what they're doing. The testing and stuff like that. So that, that's why they have to be present.
So the paperwork of them passing.
Is their own page, Southbridge's paperwork.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what was added was that?
I just, yeah.
The plan consisting.
Yeah.
Copy.
Seven, the existing sewer lines connecting forty and fifty optical drive with public sewer lines located in the public way shall be press attested and video inspected with the town of Southbridge Sewer Department personnel present to ensure the integrity of the existing underground lines. Any deficiencies shall be brought into compliance with the town's standard requirements. Any new sewer line proposed shall be designed in accordance with the town of Southbridge Sewer Department standard requirements. Plan of existing sewer line connections within the property shall be supplied to the Southbridge Water and Sewer Departments. In drainage pipes and structures located at forty and fifty optical drive shall be inspected for their integrity by the applicant's project engineer, the engineer, who are required to be submitted to the department of public work, the DPW director, building inspector, and the planning board. All new drainage pipes and structures shall be inspected prior to backfilling by the engineer. Once completed, a certification letter shall be submitted to the DPW director, the building commissioner, and the planning board. Nine. The applicant shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, the DPW director and superintendent, the police chief, fire chief, and where the fire department safety town planner and a conservation agent or the conservation commissions designate prior to the start of construction to review all conditions and requirements issued for this project. Ten. One year after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant should inform the return of the planning board to discuss the project. If issues are found, the applicant should file the appropriate permit modification request with the appropriate town of Southbridge department or board. No event shall this impact the issuance of certificates of occupancy. Eleven. The applicant shall submit a structural bridge analysis performed by a licensed structural bridge engineer to determine the adequacy of the following bridge, bridge structures. A, the bridge of Mechanic Street drive entrance crossing the Quinne Bog River. B, the bridge crossing the Quinne Bog River leading from the Lenzdale Gate. And C, the bridge that crosses the tail race leading to the Lenzdale Gate. These bridge structures shall be evaluated for their capacity to support the town of Southbridge's largest fire apparatus. The applicant shall assume the cost of this third-party review and analysis on behalf of the planning board. This analysis report shall be filed with the DPW director, the building commissioner, and the planning board. And the issue of building permits is dependent on the absence of bridge deficiencies in the report. The deficiencies we found, the applicant must immediately submit an action plan to address any deficiencies related to pedestrian, public safety, and vehicle access listed in the analysis report. Building permits shall not be issued until the deficiencies are corrected. Schedule of routine inspections as specified by the applicant's reporting structural engineer for at least every five years. A written report shall also be furnished with the town of Southbridge DPW director and the planning board as required prior to the occupancy being issued.
I'm reading permit.
Go on.
Okay. Twelve, the applicant shall provide an exterior charging station and storage for lithium-powered personal transportation devices. Location is to be approved by the town of Southbridge Fire Department. The app, thirteen, the applicant shall hire an appropriate engineer to update the operations and maintenance manual for the levees on the property per the latest state and federal code regulations as discussed at the planning board meeting of March sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Evaluate the levees and submit a copy of the report to the planning board and the building commissioner as discussed, also at the March sixth, two thousand twenty-four planning board meeting. Fourteen, the pedestrian bridge over the existing dam connecting twenty-five K Street to sixty optical drive shall be improved to meet applicable building and safety codes and shall be open and available to residents of all the buildings located on the applicant's site. This is to ensure pedestrian access to the applicant's property on both sides of the Quinne Bog River. Fifteen, all existing dams on-site shall be regularly inspected and maintained in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Dam Safety Regulations. Sixteen, upon completion of the paved, upon completion of the paving of the parking lots for forty and fifty optical drive and prior strip, striping, fire department shall review access with their largest vehicle, Tower One, to verify consistency with the approved plans as to adequate public safety access. Seventeen, the applicant shall perform the following traffic mitigation measures. A, improvements at the intersection of Mechanic Street and Charlton Street as follows. One, install no-turn-on-red signage on all approaches to the intersection. Two, increase yellow clearance for intervals from three seconds to three point five seconds on all the approaches. Three, increase all red clearance interval on Mechanic Street from one second to two seconds. And four, increase the all-red clearance interval on Charlton Street from one second to three seconds. B, conduct a traffic monitoring study one year after obtaining ninety percent occupancy. This study will include the following. One, collection of traffic volumes at the site driveway intersections and the intersection of East Main Street and North Woodstock Drive. And a capacity analysis review at the intersection of East Main Street and North Woodstock Drive. Notes.
All right, we should make those note Woodstock Road, not Drive.
Yeah, yeah. Shall I proceed?
Yes, please.
Note, improvements at this intersection will be limited to traffic signal timing adjustments. If the monitoring study identifies any of the approaches as having a LOSE.
Level of Service E or a level of service F.
Level of service F, thank you. Two, a review of the intersection of Mechanic Street and Optical Drive North Street and the intersection of Case Street and East Main Street to determine if there have been any changes to pre-development traffic conditions. A list of recommendations, if any, shall be provided to the planning board. If any suggested mitigation is implemented by the town, the applicant has agreed to contribute up to fifty percent of the mitigation costs, but no greater than one hundred thousand dollars. This is not worded properly. In, under, no circumstances.
In no, maybe it should just say, in no circumstances.
I think it would be under, under.
Circumstances, just get rid of the in.
Get rid of the in. So amended, under no circumstances, shut this and validate the granting of the special permit. Eighteen, implement a transportation demand management program, TDM. That will include the following. A, a member of the faculty management team will be assigned as a site-wide transportation coordinator. B, this applicant shall provide transportation-related information, including WRTA schedules, maps of bicycle and walking routes, et cetera, in the residential building lobbies. C, transportation-related information included in the building lobby shall also be provided as part of a welcoming package for new tenants. Nineteen, additional considerations. A, the applicant shall install LED signs to warn motorists of crosswalk ahead on East Main Street. These shall be placed to provide adequate warning both east and west of the Case Street entrance. B, an emergency vehicle, a multiple-directional island located at Lenzdale Gate shall be installed when the future town of Southbridge roadway, roadway improvements are implemented. C, the applicant shall prepare a mitigation plan to address the separation of pedestrian vehicular, that needs to be vehicular. Traffic along Case Street between the intersections of East Main Street and twenty-five K Street. In no event shall this impact the issuance of cert, certificates of occupancy. D, any reports shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works for their review. Twenty, landscaping, building, and ground shall be maintained in accordance with the latest landscape plans submitted with this application and the plans as listed above. Twenty-one, all trash and debris are to be removed from the site in a timely manner. Twenty-two, prior to the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy, as-built site plan shall be submitted to the planning board and a final walkthrough with the applicant and the planning board shall be scheduled. Twenty-three, the playground as depicted on site plans next to forty optical drive shall have play equipment for young children, such as, by way of example only, sandboxes, swing sets, and small play areas, but specifically excluding a basketball court or other sports playing fields, sports playing field. Was there not something as to, um, a discussion around older children?
We took, we took that out.
We took that out?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So now we're, uh, record our planning.
So in accordance with the, um, requirements, we also have the following findings. That, um, number one, that the proposed residential use is allowed under nine point three of the American Optical Flex Overly District of the Southbridge zoning bylaws. Number two, that following peer review and extensive discussion examination during the public hearing condition, during the public hearing, conditions were drafted and voted unanimous in favor to address this issue. In addition, uh, it has been professionally designed to comply with state and federal historical, uh, regulations, ensuring that it will not alter the character of the district. Number three, that comprehensive professional, professional plans were filed as required with the application and review for adequacy by the town professionals and peer review. Permits and inspections will ensure that all required facilities are in place and functional for the intended residential use. Number four, the site is not.
Deposed.
Deposed to neighboring zones except on East Main Street and Mechanic Street where it is in harmony with other zones.
Red system.
Position.
Uh, number five, uh, conditions were drafted and, and vote no. We don't.
We did vote no.
Uh.
They weren't unanimous?
Well, we did vote it.
I thought we did.
I guess we have. Yeah, we can go with this here. And then if it's not, well, this have to. Right, okay, right. Voted unanimously by the board to mitigate or prevent traffic concerns on East Main Street and Mechanic Streets. The traffic study indicated that the projected increase in vehicles is not great enough to cause traffic congestion. Number six, the Southbridge master plan includes the goals of improved housing and historic preservation. The number set, seven is not applicable. With the, um, additional, um. With the additional findings that the site and landscaping plans comply with the earth-removal, wetland, and stormwater regulations, trees and shrubs will be added and only trees in poor condition, if any, will be removed. That the conditions were drafted and voted unanimously by the board to address traffic and pedestrian concerns specific to this project. Number three was not applicable to minimize scenic views. Number four, minimize visual intrusion, controlling the visibility of parking, storage, and other outdoor services. It was addressed on the site plans. Number five, minimize glare and headlights. It's shown on with the lighting plan with the downlight, should be with the lighting Number six was the plans were developed in accordance with state, federal historical preservation regulations. No alterations or visible changes to the exterior of the building is intended. Number seven, that provide access to structures for fire service equipment and adequate provision for utilities and stormwater drainage. It was shown on the utilities and stormwater plans and addressed. Minimize contamination of groundwater is not applicable to this project, complies with applicable provisions of the bylaw. It was affirmed upon examination review of the plans. Number ten is meets all applicable development review considerations, and it was affirmed again upon examination review of the plans.
Can I just ask one quick question? On point one, with the trees and shrubs, since trees and shrubs will be added and only trees in poor condition, if any, will be removed, while literally have something in there saying that they would be replaced, not removed. I mean, I can see that they would be removed if they're sick or unwell. Should they be replaced because?
Well, there's a landscape plan, so any new trees are located on that.
I mean, if a tree goes down in your yard, are you required to replace it? It dies and falls over?
But he's got a landscape plan.
If they, they say that they're going to have trees and shrubs in a certain place, then de facto, as I understand it, those plans must be adhered to and there must be a tree or shrub in that place. So it's not just removed, it's replaced. If the landscape plan is what we're following.
We've approved the landscape plan.
And then that, much like Cumberland Farms, if I'm not mistaken, right? Like, if, if brush dies, if something.
This is if anything shown on his plans dies, yes, then it has to be replaced.
Correct, that's what I think.
But is bleeding into the roadway, the large trees or something like that? If one of them dies or a limb's gonna come across or it's unsafe, they can take that down and they don't have to replace it.
Because they have a landscaping plan that shows where every tree is going to be.
Not on the existing trees.
Oh, okay.
The existing trees are just shown as a buffer tree. This is more, not so around the building. Around the building is a complete landscape plan.
Right.
And that would have to be if something goes, replace.
Right.
But like the, the, going in the Glensdale Gate before you cross the bridge, you got the big, the big trees right, right there where the playground was or something. If it's unsafe, the tree's going over the playground, they can take it down, they don't have to really replace it. It's more, it's more so that type of.
Sure.
Is tree, trees removed.
Sure. Yeah, I, what I, I'm not, I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about like if he says he's going to have a bed of tulips in his landscaping plan and ten years goes by and none of the tulips are there anymore, there is still a requirement to have whatever they said.
Because the landscaping.
Because it's on the plan.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, there's not so much.
That's why I'm confused by the word removed and not replaced in, in, in question one.
Six, is it six inches in caliber or larger?
Uh, sorry, uh, two point six point five, um, point one in the conditions.
Yeah.
It says trees and shrubs will be added and only trees in poor condition, if any, will be removed. Um, there's just, there's something there that's contradictory to what we're requiring. If, if we are requiring the applicants to adhere to their landscaping plan, here they're being instructed that it's okay just to remove it and not replace it.
No, no, no.
What am I missing?
You're missing the fact that this is existing as opposed to what's proposed.
It's what it doesn't say, it should say existing.
So it doesn't say existing. So maybe we need to put existing in, and then that would cover the but. Site, but we're here, we're talking about the site and landscaping plans comply with earth removal. So we're here, we are talking, the subject is the site and landscaping plans. The subject of the sentence is the site and landscaping plans.
But we can say only existing trees in poor condition.
Okay.
Existing?
Yeah.
Currently existing? Because existing could happen fifty years from now. But currently existing.
Yeah.
So as when this is filed, two thousand twenty-four.
That's fine. Yeah, I'm okay.
All right, that.
So I have a motion and a, I need a second.
One second.
Discussion.
Oh, quite a few times it came up.
Uh, your name?
Oh, sorry, William Cody, two twenty-three Everett Street. There's a lot of discussion that came up that it couldn't limit the occupation limits. Doesn't it kind of lose any kind of leverage you would have by saying that? You know, it cannot change occupation limits, so by, by saying that, you loses your leverage on everything.
For two points, I believe, if I remember correctly. It was the, um, the traffic study. So part of the consideration of the board with regard to the traffic study, they paid for an analysis, we've come to a third-party analysis and we've looked at the traffic flow. So we've come to a point where we have an understanding and there've been some changes made as listed in the conditions here. So now in practice, once there's ninety percent occupancy, we're going to look at it again and see if there's any discrepancies. Problem is, for the applicant, if we say that their permits are conditional on those issues being fulfilled, they can't get financing. And we don't want to inhibit their ability to get financing. So places in which I think it was traffic, was there anywhere else that we had?
Yeah, it was before that, it was two.
Yeah.
Where else was it?
Uh, it came up before I had any.
Yeah, it's the same idea.
That was, that was the reasoning behind it.
Yeah.
So it's, that's the same idea.
There are issues like with the bridges.
Well, it was one year after the issuance of the certificate, the applicant shall informally return to the planning board to discuss the project, okay? Under no eventual, in fact, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Yeah. So it was all, it's all financially based. Nobody's gonna give them any money at all if the permit could be pulled in the future.
One hand ties the other.
Well, it's how you do it. Yeah.
But for example, on, on, on health and safety issues like the bridges and so on, and the compliance that they've had to show on their maps and the work that we've done for safety regulations and so on, they have.
To comply.
Had to comply with regulations. So there's been, how many months of oversight, like eight months of going through this with like engineers, third-party engineers, and so on? And those conditions have been met in, in what they've submitted and what we've come to with these third-party analysis. So the things that, like the traffic study, for example, it's, um, they need to start moving and building and we need to have the ninety percent occupancy in order to see the impact. So, but at that point, it, it will be built and we financed and we want them to get that financing, obviously. So we don't want to prohibit them from getting that financing, and that's why we said it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact the permit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As far as discussion, I want to thank the board for all the work we've done and the applicant and all the cooperation we've had between them and us. And I think it's been very fruitful and enlightening for all of us.
And I second that, and I think ultimately that there is a good comprehensive plan with protections both before the board. And I'm, I promise I won't say seven years this, this time, but I hope it gets done a lot quicker, very, very quickly. Cause I think this is a benefit, especially with the rehab of the functionally obsolete buildings that are on, on the site and quite prominently available, I mean, visible, visible too.
This weekend, I was very happy when I went past the building and saw mothers out sitting around the, the water there and there were little kids on their bicycles going up and down. So isn't that what we really want?
You're gonna, you're gonna see more of that.
More of that, yeah.
Yeah.
May I comment?
Please do.
That's what we want too. Unfortunately, the town council shot down our master plan. We could go Monday, so I'm not sure we'll ever get those approved this time. That I'm required to do outside the project area, I'm committed to doing independent of all that. But hopefully you folks can convince town council that this master plan is really important for the town, for the project, and we can move that project forward someday, so.
I would love to see that.
I would too.
I'd love to hear.
Did we, did we get copies?
Yeah, I love the couple versions.
I'm not bad.
Cory? Cory, do you have anything to say?
No.
All right.
Well, I think it was a huge, it's a huge project, so it took a lot of energy, but I think we got there.
Guys have been great to work with, I really appreciate it. I'm gonna miss our chats.
I am too.
And I don't know what I'm gonna do with myself.
You need to talk to the council.
I may just come out here and sit through these meetings.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Hey, we're a lot better than this. Uh, can we vote first? Okay, okay.
Chip, thank you.
Thank you.
Lot of work and a very delicate and impactful site that you own. And to see it moving ahead and fulfilling its role in this century and being an asset and the value to the town is massive and it's huge lift and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that, because it's a huge lift.
Yeah, for sure.
It's been a, uh, project of love. Been here a long time, so.
Well, if you ever need any help, you want some of that, uh, jail dog energy, let me know.
Sandy?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Dave, yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What do they have, your period?
It's that.
Arnold?
Abstain.
Abstain, yes.
I'm excited.
So the twenty-year period after I sign and Tom Clark clicks it in.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Good, congratulations.
Thank you all.
Sleep well tonight.
I will.
That was a good one.
Thanks.
See ya.
Bye-bye.
Appreciate it.
So we dropped off, we dropped off, um, this master plan here, so maybe we're gonna be getting it. Ken wasn't here this week, so.
He had, he had some copies here, I never picked them up, I didn't either.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, because that's surprising.
Yeah, I didn't know that they were here, I would definitely want.
So there's gonna be some corrections?
Okay.
Find this one by.
Nobody knows what they disagreed with at town council on their master plan? Do you not have a sense of that?
I didn't, I'd have to look it. See. You know what?
That's the whole thing?
Yeah, that's what he, he.
Unfortunately.
I brought one.
So does anybody else want one?
I, we can make copies.
Yes.
Do you want copies?
Okay. I think we should all have them.
Yes, I agree.
Do you have one?
I don't have one. I'll take one.
There were two of them, and I scarfed up one, there should have been another one going somewhere.
Everyone, everyone, but you and.
Sometimes it's, oh, it's come out, isn't it?
Yeah.
I took the master plan.
There had to be some type of extramuncations that probably go down that would associate with that.
I think I have also a feeling that they've heard industrial use in the site. I know that that's been something that I've heard about and been asked questions about.
And how are they going to get that industrial? Even those are some.
Yeah, that's, maybe it's something else, but that's, that's what I have heard.
I didn't know that.
I don't know if that's what they voted on, but that's what I had heard.
Okay. Some of the proposed changes.
Actually, we printed them out.
Wait, wait, wait.
Well, I can share what you mean.
I think I need to say goodbye, that was really big effort. I was really impressed with all of that work.
Wait, and you, I don't have the time to discuss it, but what happens when we have a lot of discussion, we usually reach consensus. And that's the way we have actually, we've actually done a lot of things like that.
Very impressive work.
There's a lot of time coming. I had longer. Yeah, yeah. I had one that took a year and a half.
Oh my God, over here. Which ones? I think it should be.
Well, some of the proposed changes, I think Ken dug this out of Eric's files.
What, are we, are we, uh?
No.
Oh, so this was the.
Some of the proposed changes.
Okay.
Now, I think, like I said, I think he found it in Eric's background.
Do we have an idea of when that was needed to, as last saved?
Did you print the red, red line copy?
Yeah.
I did too.
Cause the red line copy probably shows a little bit. I did, that was, that was only one page of that.
But I did print it.
Did you?
Yes, I only had one jam. I did have a jam, but.
I saw ninety-one pages, I went.
But I did it double sided.
Agenda?
I did some.
Agenda?
This is the one.
You only get a lot of.
No, that's the excavation. And this is what.
You consider workshop discussion of zoning bylaw amendments, including first excavation and filling.
Including, but it could be other things.
I didn't, yeah, I just didn't realize we were going to this.
Yeah, that's it.
See, it's like this, and it's kind of nice because it just lists each section.
Oh, I didn't remember I did this, this is great.
I'm just not quite sure how we can go through it if we don't have the red line copy.
Didn't you print, did you know you didn't print?
I have it, but I didn't bring it tonight because I didn't realize that we were, I thought we were doing earth excavation, so that I have with me.
Open to earth.
Yeah.
This is fine, it's easy, straightforward. I'm open to earth.
Um, hey.
Yes.
Um, did, did he send you that document in an email?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Do you happen to see on the document, we got that from you today.
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's a visual on when it was last saved, because you would know up to what point Eric had worked on it. You know, is it like two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three to find?
Well, if you, if you come in and look at the.
Yeah, yeah.
Which was originally mine.
Yeah.
There's always a date on when it was last modified.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm wondering.
Unless I, unless Ken opened it today.
If he didn't modify it. It would just be great to know up to what point these changes, so we know how much it includes. Okay, that's why. Okay, Terry.
I did too much there. I'm not willing to.
Oh, I see.
I don't like one, these are my least favorite.
Oh, are they?
Working draft. Oh, wait a minute, here's in the email, here, this is red one, you guys have it?
It is, just because it's ninety-one pages long.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have it though.
Which one, which email?
Um, it was from Ken this afternoon at four o'clock. Uh, it's called.
Waiting plan?
Working draft of Southbridge ZBL, where you left off.
It had two attachments.
Yeah, he says it at four o'clock. So it's the ninety-one pages of the red line, so we got that at four and then the summary of proposed changes was in the shorter document.
And I did print one so we could, you know.
One page, let me do it.
Okay, good. Where's, we have two copies.
If you look cheap.
I'm gonna say.
If you look cheap, I didn't do my ninety-one pages or my little.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want yours stapled?
Bring the line back?
Oh, it's in the computer.
Can I have a copy too? Oh, yeah, that much, yeah.
This is, this is how thick it is. This is almost. And we've been working with a lot of changes and.
Okay. Yeah, Arnold, I don't.
It's living the life.
What's changed, um.
I haven't.
Should be.
The history is, there was need to change and update a lot of the zoning bylaws. They hired somebody in 2018 to come in, a consultant, and as part of other work, I think, and she changed a lot of stuff and it was a massive package and council just voted it through, but a lot of things were missed. And so we've been going through what was done in 2018 and making sure we keep what we like, but that some things really need to be changed because there were rules that she took away that have hindered our work.
Okay.
Or inconsistencies. And so, sorry, Katie.
Thank you.
But it was like a slog, like before the AO, like this is what we did. Exhausting.
On the earth excavation?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not official. I'm not there.
Yeah.
Hopefully we don't have to yell across the room.
So. Eight, ten had some red lines in it. Protect farmland soils and soils of statewide significance.
Oh, right, yes.
Oh, so we're not doing the earth excavation?
Yeah, it is.
John, we don't have the red line version that he has.
I just have.
You have it. You and Dave have the same one.
So we have another version.
Yeah, this is, this is the addition.
Right, exactly. I remember getting that.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is more yours.
Yeah. Yeah.
And Terry has the same red line. That's the only way we're working on it. Do you wanna?
Okay, I've got it in my ninety-one page thing.
You made?
Oh, just copies of it?
Red, yeah, the red line.
You're gonna have to find the file. I have no idea.
You know what? Let me take apart mine and give it to you.
This is what Ken sent out today.
Oh, okay. But this is the proposed amendment to South Bridge, um, earth excavation.
But it's in the ninety-one page document. Let me pull it out because mine's just clipped.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. What he did is he found all the red line changes that we made and he sent it in that, the whole, the whole bylaw of any changes that, that we had already talked about in red line.
So it's section eight, ten.
Yeah, and then we did, we did this, we took this out, right? Development review team.
Mm-hmm.
Is that included on that red line? Correct.
Yeah, no, he was just testing mine.
Sorry, this one, yeah, I just want to make sure that this change is in here.
No. That's not right. I, I don't have, but I have.
Yeah, the red line is here. There. It's fixed. You can, you know, put one more in.
You did. Perfect. Okay, good.
Is it, can I make a copy?
Yes.
I don't care.
Wait, I just, you need to move this.
Yeah, I do.
All right.
Make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, so we were all looking at the same.
I need one.
I need one.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, I'm just impressed. I was actually prepared.
Thanks for the vote, Carol, Cory.
Thanks for the what?
Eight forty-five, thank you, Martha. Indy. Set up for a trade show and every three year plastics show.
My son being around here.
Yeah.
My son was at the frog and too bad for him, they forced him off to first class. And then on the way back, they forced, again, the three. Doing it on the upper deck of the three.
I never get that.
He's winding down.
I always get the freaking Sunner seat.
I've, I've been afraid of one.
Oh, yeah?
You're flying with someone else. It doesn't happen.
Well, there was four guys with him. He was the only one to go up.
Oh, really?
Going in, coming from frog.
It only happened once to me when I was flying in Anchorage, Alaska. Air Alaska bumped me up to first class coming home. Had these shrimp cocktails that had to be that long. I mean, they were the biggest shrimp I've ever eaten.
Oh, yeah. Well, lots will always, they're always, Alaska's always trying to get rid of their first class seats at the last night.
Yeah.
My daughter was in San Diego, literally checking in and they had two.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take it.
But I hurt my back on the first class seat. I didn't think they were very comfortable. Their name were long-legged men.
That's right.
And I was not, and.
You didn't qualify. You, your feet dangled.
It was, it was, it was, I got. Last minute, so I went in there and, you know, I was trying to quit my little carry on in the overhead and I lifted and twisted at the same time. So then when I, I thought, well, good, I'll sit down. Those seats were just not comfortable.
What I had is your flight, where I had seven seats. I was in the center row.
Yeah.
Nobody was on them.
Oh, really?
So I put all the handrests up. I went in the middle. Put, got the extension for the seatbelt, put it around me and laid across the little seat and sucked my whole way to ground.
There you go.
That happened to me on the way back on an American flight and it was practically empty and they still flew from Heathrow.
Okay, they.
And I had that and I, that was the best airline seat I ever had.
I came out of Frankfurt and it was all the majority empty to plane flight.
Well, when I went, when I went to, and I always do, you go at night. Unless you're going to pay first class or whatever, but the thing is. And they were all around me and then there was just me and they were having a fun. That's kind of crazy.
I just got it from a weekend event.
Did you lose those, please?
Did she like it?
She did it. She was there for business. Yeah, she's like that.
I've been to the. Up to go back. I love to go to places. Not this year, but next year because I want to know before it was burned. I loved it. I love British families, but what I found was calling was how filthy dirty that cathedral was. You couldn't see any light coming through the rose window because it was so. The floors were dirty, the pews were sticky. It smelled and they didn't see it. But it was still fabulous. You know, you're climbing those rooftops. Notre Dame before it burned. I'm actually, they have a new desk. It's all coming now.
My older rooster.
One of these, what's your real picture?
It's gonna be open very soon. It's not on these, but not to the public.
And we've finally started to get them to the barn.
Because. Because of the graphics.
So I just called and I'm telling them, get him out of the house.
I think it's.
Two lights in them. Everybody's like. It is caramel.
Because something.
Got the.
Copy of the markup, the markup. The condition for.
That's what they say.
You gave it to me?
I don't know what I said.
I don't think so.
Even though it was filthy dirty, it was, I loved it.
Arnold. Oh, I put the stapler back over on the desk. Sorry.
Stunned down. Was there a lot of.
I mean, that was. Trying to pick one up.
Oh, seventeen hundreds.
Yeah, eighteen hundred, yeah. He's good, you know.
What, the thing that is that the rose would only been rebuilt several times, but they just didn't clean it and they were burning candles all the time. It's just dirty. It was just.
My candles on, just get all the fake candles.
Yeah.
Arrah, thank you.
Terry and I was.
Oh, good. Ah, you've got it.
Here, Terry and I was here.
We have one now? We asked for one.
Mike, why don't you, Mike, give me one?
Yeah.
You take this one. Terry and I was here.
Someone unstable here.
Very good.
Oh, hey, Ed.
We did, we went, we went through this whole thing.
Well, have you gone through everything before this? Have you gone through everything before section eight?
No, we popped around. We, we did. There's, if you look at that ninety page, we've done a lot of it and then looking at red lines.
I was actually, one of the bylaws, I said, don't lose, like, that kind of life would be awesome.
Regarding what?
The auction's only one of us. Well, I thought it was well run.
Was there a specific part?
Just in general, I mean, just in general, I thought it was a well run. Especially the industrial.
Yeah.
Especially the industrial manufacturing and retail sections, I thought.
I'll take a look. Around Route twenty?
Uh, no, it's mostly twelve.
Mostly Route twelve and industrial.
And the industrial plant off of, um.
Because that's where I'm, I'm in, it's industrial.
Yeah, because there, well, it's on that road behind, um, commerce.
I guess.
Did you see that there was any difference between ones and theirs?
I didn't compare them. I had to, I had to deal with that one right when, um, um, Eric was putting the region case in a report from Home Depot. And that's when I pulled that bylaw up and, because I did permit for that. I, and then I just happened to go through the whole thing and I just. I thought it was a well-run by law.
You haven't seen something like that. It's always so useful.
It's all online.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not going to spend, I'm not going to read ninety pages of somebody else's. I've just gone through that for months on the AO, so.
Well, the section I actually, the section I, the other time I had to deal with it was when John Shergill was business over there. Next one, I have to look at all the industrial stuff. That's, huh? The next one you? Yeah, the industrial stuff is well done.
If you want to print it out and bring it in, we could look at it. That would be great.
All right, so first page, B five is an addition. Does that cover the other soil now too?
Yeah, this is quite interesting, actually. Protecting farmland soils and soils of statewide significance. Uh, it doesn't because we have this new, this new.
Terminology.
Terminology, which is, um, soils of local significance, so.
But that's not, but that, that's the one you showed us, but you know what? My phone hasn't gone that list.
No, because yours is part of the soils of statewide significance or prime farmland. What he said to us was just.
Marginal.
It's, it's, it's what's called local significance. It's something new that they're doing at, what was that USDA? USDA, I believe. So they're beginning to realize that there are these other places with this other type of soil that has local historical significance in its usage. And that's why they're starting to acknowledge it and that's what the USDA referred us to when we contacted them for soils map.
But that wasn't going to be on the map, right? As way he said, there wasn't a map for it?
Not yet.
Not yet.
But you brought us one.
You can't really put it on there because you haven't got a map.
You don't have any.
Yeah, there's, I don't, well, I mean, we have the handwritten stuff, but we'd have to take through it. You know what I mean?
But there was a map that you gave us.
Yes.
And there were maps, there were prices from Blackwater Hill. Mine wasn't included.
Yeah, quite true.
No, because yours is, um, yours is soil of statewide significance.
But you said that the local one was not mapped and it was. Because it was on.
I'm not following what you're saying.
There were lines in the.
There were circles. There were circles.
Yeah.
I know. You know what? We have refused different things that came to us, opportunities, because we wanted to keep it afloat.
Yeah.
So I'm, that kind of, I don't, I don't understand that.
Yeah, that's why I know that that's in the process. So, I mean, I think for the time being where we are here, the statewide is. We're leaving, leaving where it is. And then D?
Um, quick question about that, just, um, because the state has made some movement on this stuff and I don't know how we might.
We're talking about C or D?
Sorry, we're talking about.
Five?
B five.
Okay.
So the state has made some movement on it and they've created a food security board and are looking into how to protect the soils for state interest reasons and empower municipalities to do so. But there is nothing as yet. So like something like the solar array mandate that we've had to deal with, it might be something like that in future. I don't know. I don't know what they're going to do, but. I guess once, it's a question more than anything, if they do that, we don't need it reflected in our bylaw because it would become a state mandate, correct?
Correct.
And they're, okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
And we could always change it anyways. As things get changed, we do have to go down.
Yeah.
Soils and subsoil, I agree. Now. Yeah, this is exactly what I, what I remember. And this may be all right. How's that? I'm just.
Yeah.
Just been never acting on it. I think this is one of the last ones we went through. Remember we took all, all of its means out there. October four, see, she's.
I wrote something.
Well, that might have been the next meeting, so.
It could have been.
Meeting before October four.
Sometime in September.
In September, we did this.
Because we've been really busy since then. We haven't done a lot of going through.
Well, it's when AO started, September.
Yeah.
This was the one we did, the meeting before American Optical presented for it. So it looks like we go to twenty-one or change.
What?
Oh, definitions, I see.
Yeah, we don't want a bylaw.
Oh, is this, um, here?
Oh, we didn't want a timeframe. Correct.
I mean, we took that.
So we took that out, yeah.
Right.
But see, it's not in the computer. I just. See, this is, this is their, this is, she's got the latest revisions after the initial review. That's why Terry's got these marked up because this is what we talked about, taking that out.
Yeah, we didn't want a timeframe.
And then Eric, Eric left right after that, so.
What we need to do, have these go.
Get rid of the red and have them revised.
Yeah, because I remember making these changes after the time.
Yeah, we went through them all.
Because we took that film device scene and we went to three hundred, two hundred yards versus a thousand.
Good. I'm glad to see this because it wasn't caught in the last computerized version. Thank you, Terry. Are yours?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm impressed with myself. Thank you so much. I cash. I cash.
You've done good.
Yeah.
And I had, I had. I sold this.
Could I have three hundred online for?
Where are you?
For Phil, for Cuba guys. Because of the back of fourth page on. Three hundred?
Three hundred.
Good.
Yeah, I'd like to see where this is. First time I saw approval of my law, I literally couldn't turn the garden up a lot of money.
We took out all this stuff regarding to the design review team.
Yeah.
Mike, I don't know the little history on that. There was a, somehow got put in there and it was a little quasi planning board that was enacted between the planner, the building, uh, official. The head.
Fire department.
The fire department, they were approving.
The design, design review committee or whatever it was called.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was kind of bypassing this.
I was going to ask about that, because I remember we, we had site plan review. And I was wondering, was that broken? Or did that not work, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it was a little quasi.
You saw, you saw it work tonight, because you.
We were being usurped.
Yeah, you were, yeah, you saw it.
Well, I mean, there's a, there's a, there are a lot of little things that happened that really don't need to come here.
Yes, but.
But.
But they were making the calls.
They were doing more than little things, they were.
And we weren't told, we got no notes.
Good example, they approved a complete addition onto Big Bunny's car washes, all the additions and everything else with the outdoor blowers and everything else. Right down in, in, in the whole area there for the site plan. And they, they approved that without even coming before the planning boards.
They made a decision, what?
Yeah, they said.
It wasn't required, but the thing was, we never got any minutes. Well, it was quite practical, the, the decision is to whether or not it's required or not at the gift.
Correct.
Exactly, that's what we.
It's not their call.
Or at least minutes, but she, she should have read it.
No.
Yeah. So that's why, and that's why we, there were never, never minutes, and you never knew who was the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, but the reality is, it doesn't necessarily have to come to a meeting. You can go to the chairman or the vice chairman to make a decision. Rather than.
You could.
Come down here and.
But it wasn't.
But, I don't know, the thing is, is, I mean, on, on a minor thing, how hard is it to just come in on a Wednesday night and say, hey, informally and?
Yeah, but it just takes, it just, they, they tend to take away for their own. And if you've only got to go to one, it's simply easier.
Yeah, see, and that's where the building official makes that determination.
And see, it's probably, it can come here, you know.
Yeah. Like, see on eleven, Mike, it says town salvage bylaws, section question mark. Yeah. So that needs something more of. Well, you also have a question mark.
Where are you?
Subsection eight, ten, question mark. Yeah, well, there's some question marks here that.
Where is it?
Are you all eleven?
Well, Mike just saw one, another one, I was at. Right, I'm on the page, right after the three hundred, the next paragraph, uh, next paragraph on the next page, the, where it covered the development review team.
Yep.
And right down there, you see subsections eight point, uh, one oh, eight question mark. Question mark, question, so that, that's how it got to be.
Oh, right.
Filled in. And then down the next one, subsection question mark. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, when I read that all originally a couple of years ago, I just like. I looked at it and said, well, it's, it's a building inspector, and whether or not it's a building inspector call is here, that only needs to go to the building inspector. If he wants to consult with somebody else, well.
Yes.
But then they get his call.
Yep. That's how it's supposed to be.
We didn't, we weren't even told.
The intention.
That they were doing these things, we found out.
We found out after that and all this stuff. But the intention was, the design was the informal like Oxford does, where if you're going, if you want to develop, every Friday at nine in the morning, they have a member, one member of the planning board, a member of conservation here, and they go in informally and say, this is what I want to do. Well, Noah, I think you might, you're going to have to apply to the conservation committee, and the place chiefs, the board of health, and that. And that's all, that's what the intention of that was.
Then to those meetings.
Yeah, they're awesome.
We tried, and we did try to do.
We did, you remember, we were doing them.
You know, but, no, it did not, it did not work, to be honest. The reason why it did not work is that there were egos involved. When you have a meeting like that, you are supposed to be thinking holistically. This project will work. But from the fire department, this would be needed from, you know, you'll have input from everybody, they're just supposed to look at. Their own little purviews.
Yeah.
And they were, you know, they were redesigning the downtown for one. The fire, the fire chief said, you can't have any together anymore, they have to be real far apart so that we can get our apparatus. Which is in a, you know, in a, in the best of all worlds, when there is a fire, you had, would have three hundred and sixty degree access, but that's. So, you, you, that was frustrating to deal with, it just didn't work. That was after Hamer had left. I think he would have brought everything. I mean, I tried, but I, I, I couldn't bring it back, so we just didn't do.
I did, I bet to the ones in Oxford, they're, they're so helpful to do that.
Because they're all working together.
They're all working together. But then again, well, when I did that for the, the. Region care center, I might have asked him to the planning board, it's almost like.
In Charlton?
In Oxford.
Oh, Oxford, oh, yes.
They had no positions in Oxford, and they still don't, and it was like. You don't have to say anything, we're going to approve.
Once it's not a non-existing use.
Yeah.
How is this referring to something different?
Well, that there was a member of the planning board there.
And they had no positions in Oxford, this was, this was getting positions in the, in the town.
That's the one in Charlton, which was, uh, we went, we went there last summer when Ed was sick. It was a very, it's a very nice facility, the doctor was very nice, he said, unfortunately, what's going on with you, we can't deal with it, you're going to have to go right to the hospital. So as we were driving out, he let me drive, as we were driving out, he said, what are you saying, we go to the grocery store on our way to the hospital?
Alright, we've got too many question marks.
And there's a lot of question marks in here, I think we've got to go back one by one.
Okay, you're going to start.
Well, it just, it says, because of this, question mark, because of that, question mark, and so it's like, what the heck?
Mister Chairman.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I need to shut my eyes.
You're an excuse little girl.
Do you raise your hand?
I'm glad. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry, for coming.
No problem.
Right, I think the first page is fine. I don't see any question marks. And I had, I gotta say, the definitions that were formatted, took out all the word means, that's basically what I'm about to do.
Yeah, that's all I do, so.
Question.
Definition.
So back on the page with the three hundred.
Section eight point, ten point two.
And then we were keeping each permanent issue by the planning board. Twelve oh one AM, Wednesday. No, it's been crossed out. No.
B's been crossed out.
B's been crossed out? I think that whole section's gone.
Uh.
Twelve AM, Wednesday, twelve oh one, so.
Let's think about it, see what it says.
I remember this issue.
So the second.
Why don't we take out the first time, and then we take out the second time?
So are the definitions okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, this was because, and we were talking about doing it on Thursday, because you have to sign it, there was something about that, I remember.
Oh, Noah, it's probably, let's see, I think you have twelve oh one AM.
Say twelve.
Yeah.
Because if we were here that late.
Well, what if we just say, any permanent issue by the planning board shall continue in effect? I think that's how we left it, I thought.
I thought privately adopted this bylaw.
Yeah. Why would they be prior?
Because this law doesn't affect anything that's happened beforehand.
Right, right. No, it was grandfathered because it wasn't on.
Is that what this is addressing?
Yes.
So could you rethink that, please? Termination.
If you, if you brought a planning board prior to the adoption of this bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shall continue in effect, it shouldn't go in there. By law, Steve. I want to. Reenact.
Same change in the era.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike. Pleasure. So we like. So what's the difference between that, three hundred and the one thousand? Well, this is, the planning was, uh, until to an exist, existing structural use on a property. Basically, you've got a residential house, you've got to put some yard in, you want to extend the yard a little bit, it's up three hundred feet, three hundred cubic yards.
Right.
The other one is complete gravel pit, one thousand yard.
Is it not, is it not referring to residential as well?
Three hundred's a lot of yard, three hundred's a lot of cubic yards.
Right, that's why we took it down from a thousand.
If you're building.
They had a thousand.
No, because I'm thinking, well, I've got a pool with the other house.
There's, each, each, each.
And it's still not three hundred yards.
Right.
It's thirty, it's thirty dump trucks.
So if you're building a big house, would you be excavating more than three hundred yards?
Possibly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, you know, if you're depending on what way you're building, you could be building more than that, I mean, you know.
So you're saying, so I guess we're saying that if you're, if you're building a really big house. Have to come.
I don't know, when, when I was a kid, they were, they were building a house up the street from me, and they literally built a foundation, built it, and then built another foundation on top of it, to build the house on.
Well, here, they're just, we're giving them.
But I mean, that would have covered three hundred yards unless the foundation was massive.
Well, I guess what we're saying is.
Well, that would, that would, that would have required a lot of, over, anything over three hundred yards, since that requires a permit, a permit, and that's what.
So that means that if you're building a really big house, you might need a permit.
Or if you're building in a very low, in a very low spot, that you want to bring that, bring that, bring that, the whole thing up.
Right, exactly.
And it's just.
And actually, to.
So you're allowing about.
Becoming more likely, to be honest with you.
Yes.
You're thinking about what's billable around here.
Yes.
Each, each tent, ten wheeler dump truck is about eighteen, eighteen yards, so it's only about fifteen truckloads, fifteen, sixteen truckloads.
How much is a truck, how much is it?
About eighteen yards.
I had twenty of them.
One AM, yeah, some of them, some of them, some of them are all twenty.
I would have been over three hundred yards, that's because of water table, that's still, so it's a damn high.
Well, some of them are at twenty yards on a dump truck, so you think about it, it's. Three hundred. So.
It was not that much.
Fifteen dump truck loads.
It wasn't all, when you get right down to it, that was not that much.
No.
Well.
And again, it was, how this came about is, good, good example, and I had a great example in my, in my neighborhood. The, the neighbor came in and started bringing a dump truck, little dump truck, little dump truck hook, but, um, put like a one-to-one slope on it, and it washed all the silt in all the houses behind, okay? So, because if he brought that much in, and we figured anything over three hundred cubic yards, at least it alerts the building inspector and the build, that there's something that going on, because you start bringing in that much, you, you got.
Surface water runoff.
That would have a lot of issues.
It, it kind of depends on what you're doing.
Yeah, it does, it does, so we use it more as a trigger factor.
Yeah.
Well, in prior to one thousand, the.
But I've got, yeah.
You're going to put a question mark in it.
Not necessarily something that needs to come here.
Yeah, right. We're just saying it needed a permit, instead of, yeah, it requires such information that's sent forth in subsections eight, ten, question mark, why? So, before we go beyond that. You know. I remember, such information.
Yeah, that's.
Section eight, ten.
Again, that's one of those, I look at that, the residential ceiling, it's like, sometimes you need it, sometimes you determine, sometimes you don't. Somebody ought to be able to make a call, who wouldn't know what's needed.
Well.
Well, there is no. Probably going to get to.
A requirement of like.
We go up to eight, nine.
Engineering standards, women, you have to have engineering standards.
Yeah, it's like E P W maybe, or the building inspector, something like that.
Or more bylaws, I'm sorry. I mean, if you change the slope more than X, Y, Z, then you require, you know, you have to get guidance.
Yeah, you have to get, alright, so, something.
There have to be guidance.
Yeah. Eight, ten, one.
Yeah, this is all eighteen.
This is all that I know. So this is totally, so it's eight, ten, point something.
Yes, it's a.
Soil erosion sediment control, so, so we have to say, section soil erosion sediment control.
Yeah, that's, that's a bigger piece.
Are you guys?
Well, we're discussing, this is eight, ten, so, what we're saying in subsection, we've got to find out where is it in the document that we're.
That we're writing in.
That we're, that we're writing, right, we're, we're writing it, but.
I wonder if the question marks mean that we need to write it?
I think it means to read, it would be eight point ten.
Right here.
What subsection?
Right.
Right. An erosion sediment control one shall be approved by the planning board.
Application process, do we not have application process written yet?
It's just what you go through.
Application is on the last page. It is approval criteria, eight point, ten point eight, and then. Eight, so that's the permit.
Bonds is in here too, like you said.
Yeah, they should definitely have subsection headings.
Performance bond is eight, ten point seven, is eight, ten point seven.
Okay.
And bonds.
I wish you wanted to make a whole more bond.
I don't think it's more so.
I think that's for big projects.
Yeah, this is for the bigger.
Yeah.
Like, you know, like, well, one of the things.
I get, I get it, Sandy, it's like, how is somebody going to read it ten years from now or fifteen years from now, is always in my mind.
Yeah.
You know, because I'm, I'm looking at the demolition delay by law, and it's like, literally you can control somebody who wants to go bashing into the final sliding. You read it that way, and you can read it that way.
Yeah.
I love flexible laws.
Well, then.
I would have to deal with it every day.
Yeah. It might, you, you, you like flexible laws until somebody is flexible and.
You don't like when it's wet.
I'm sorry, it's you.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
What happens? Well, the thing of it is, what we were thinking was, a subdivision, at one, at one time when we first started talking about earth excavation, we said, when you're doing a subdivision, you, you would definitely have to pull an.
Well, yeah, you've got subdivision rules and regulations, you can put all that in.
Right.
Such performance.
But that's why we were saying three hundred.
Yeah, if you, if you're looking at that from that kind of perspective, from the subdivision perspective.
For a big project, because like, you know, like, how, how do you know that somebody might be wanting to do a brickyard, so they're going to be excavating a huge, well, actually, there was going to be one like that on Ashland Avenue, they had to, they had to do so much, they gave up the project. Because they, it would cost so much to remove that much, so they, so they dropped it.
Same thing with, with, um, T K, T K's land, I'm worried about the cost of doing the, um, the site, the site development, we had a, our, our class closed. Project away.
T K who?
Hmm?
T K?
T K commerce, the old beachway.
The historical.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. Blame you for that.
Somebody was.
Something anyway.
Yeah.
At least it's not an auto parts store.
That's a very.
Application process, eight, eight, ten, five?
Eight, ten, five.
Approval soil erosion sediment control.
Yeah, the, actually, I remember the access, it was really true, how they were going to get.
That's fine.
So, yeah, I'm actually quite frankly, quite frankly, for this role, commission, you know what happened? I made a meeting with this role commission, and I forget which auto class load was, and the auto class.
Right.
Basically, what can we do to memorialize the building, what they came in and said? And we thought we had a pretty good meeting. And so, I left, because we were saying people left, the engineers left, and the next thing we know, the O'Reilly pulled out of the deal, because after we left, this role commission sent a letter, asking them to, to re-quit the building, to, to look in the building. And so. And so, last for the owner was take them out of the equation.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I could understand.
If they hadn't done the letter, the building would still be there because they probably wouldn't have done it anyway.
Yeah, well, it's, hopefully, we can avoid those things and maintain the character of the town, because this town has some amazing buildings.
It's, it's, yeah, I mean, I.
That's part of what they do with the, was it the CDDG? Is they're helping the owners with these old rundown buildings on Main Street to give them like.
That building is not economically feasible. No.
On different levels, I understand. And it wasn't in.
Plus it had.
Wasn't a good shit.
Well, the real issue was that he was asking too much money.
It wasn't a good, it wasn't in good shape, it had no insulation, it had single pan windows, which probably needed to be, um, um, what do you call them, like, um, shadowproof stuff.
That have to be re-laced and put storms on because it's historical, you can't, you can't.
They would have had to been replaced with, um, tempered glass.
Uh.
They did that load.
Well, Mike was very.
They had loaded their ground, they were, they were real.
That loaded the ground, we're not gonna put.
We quieted.
Tempered glass. You're talking, probably six figures for the windows.
And then on shatter.
And, you know, Mike was gonna buy that building.
I did.
He offered him money, the guy turned him down, so.
Hold on.
That would have been.
But the thing is, I only opt in.
But he hadn't maintained, the building wasn't.
My doctor, my daughter's doctor, uh, doctor's office is in, um, across from Harrington, Dr. Philak, she has a red house in the corner.
Mm-hmm.
And she, she has an old house, um, and she's made it work, and I would love.
He had a great, uh, doctor's office in there for years and years.
It was wonderful, so I can't imagine that something like that couldn't be possible, because I go to Vermont and I go to these like charming old.
Problem is, you need a doctor that's gonna buy a dilapidated house, sunk a, sunk a million dollars into it, and still try to heal those businesses. It's not economically feasible.
Well, Doctor Stages did.
The village actually looked at it, too.
Yeah. Stages is.
Doctors, doctors, Stages, but he's left there. So it didn't work in the end.
Over seventy years.
Yeah. In Portland, in Scotland, where they're also a small town, and they had corporations buying those buildings in order to be able to build, bring them on the code.
So many patients.
The Holy Marrow.
But business is peaceful now when you rent.
Yeah.
It's a nice building, though.
They have trust.
What happened to her?
Yeah, it was a spectacular thing, and they made, they made that.
Right, exactly, but the problem is the corporations now are buying these, and the business owners are having a hard time staying afloat.
So wouldn't you, you guys, I know.
Let's look at this, let's look at this and stay afloat.
But then they're not making enough money because of the rent they're paying, if you know what I mean? So like that disrupts.
Let's bring up a one, a one issue that.
Positions. Positions, the independent ones, you know, everybody works for a corporation, or with Oxford.
Is there a way we can talk to, somehow, ask or something, Big Y, Laza, for them to, uh, implement the, uh, cart breaks on their shopping carts? Um, if you noticed, I mean, on a weekly basis, there's ten to fifteen shopping carts on the bridge next, uh, across from the Golden Greek.
Yeah.
That people take offsite.
And this year, they, this week, they.
And then someone, someone's, someone's been cleaning them up every one or two weeks, been bringing them back. But, you know, you.
Well, Big Bunny sends, you know, Pete, Pete sends a, a pickup truck, you know, they, they know where they're gonna be.
Yeah.
They send out a truck to pick them up.
Well, there was also on the Facebook page, picture of like ten or twelve in the water. In the water, yeah, they're, they're getting dumped, they're pulling off of there. There was, there's a bunch of them, we're on a trail the other day, looking down there, there's kids, a few of them down there. And the thing is, is, um, if you, if you look at it, all of it, all of this is, it's a cart brake on one wheel, and it's an R R signal. And when it gets out of the signal range, the brake kicks on and people, the people don't wanna push them anymore because you can't.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, and there, there are technologies there, Walmarts use it for years. I, I did it on my Walmart sites when I used.
So it's not that expensive.
It's a, it's just, you know, it's a corporation making business decisions.
Yeah, exactly.
So, um, just a quick question on, to that end, what is the need? Is it the people who don't have cars that live in Brookside Terrace, if we want, like, we want them to go pick up without using a car, because it reduces traffic?
They need their own carts, and they sell them at Big Y. They sell those little carts.
They do.
So if you could, and they collapse, so if you were walking to Big Y, you could bring your own cart and then use.
But why aren't they doing that?
It's the same, it's, it's one or two people that go to the grocery, I, because I've seen the person.
Uh.
It, it's this little old lady that goes to the grocery store, and I see her coming back and up, going in, and it's, every day, when I come home from work, I've seen her like twenty times.
She may be leaning on a cart, like, she may actually need the support physically.
Twenty some more times, I doubt.
Yeah.
I just, I wonder, does the WRTA go from Brookside Terrace to the supermarket? I'm just wondering what the need is and how we help that, so that there's.
It's probably, it's only one or two people that are, that are doing it.
But do they have any RTA between Brookside?
But they need groceries, that's one or two people.
But, I mean, it, it, it says something, something brought up that, it says something, we can ask them if there's a possibility, they can look into it. I mean, that, that, that would be.
I can ask them.
Yeah.
It would be nice if.
To look into that, I mean, it, it would solve a little bit of their problems, it would keep all over, because I mean, like I said, every day it grows by one or two, or one or two, and. And, but then all of a sudden, it's cleaned up, and then you got one, two.
If they're on the road, one thing, if they're in the water, something.
Look, I'm super trashy and I'm not into it, like, it doesn't hit.
So that, that, that was, that was the only real issue that I.
People need to move their.